Good evening. I would like to call to order this meeting of the Winston and Board of Selectmen. It is Monday, August 15th, 2022 at 6:30 PM. Please rise and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there anyone in the audience, pardon me, this evening that is audio or video recording? If you would just raise your hand and indicate so. And I see none. Thank you. Selectmen's comments and announcements. Mrs. Salter.
None at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Ward.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Anderson.
Nothing at this time.
Thank you. Mrs. Lapoy.
No, thank you.
All right, and I have nothing else out. Are there any public comments or announcements this evening that anyone would like to share with us? All right, seen and hearing none. Moving on, we have no public hearings. Appointments and resignations. We do have one of each. Recreation Commission resignation from Tiffany Newton. She's been appointed as the, to the part-time coordinator position. And as such, she has to resign from the commission. Questions or comments? Seen and hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move to accept Tiffany Newton's resignation from the Recreation Commission and thank her for her service on this commission.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded to approve. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye with a huge thank you and good luck moving forward with the coordinator position. We then have a request for an appointment to the Conservation Commission. Glenn Rochelle has submitted a letter. Is he here this evening? Would you get it come up? Not really, he says. Oh, you can just have a seat at the table if you would. So, welcome and thank you for applying. What prompted your letter of interest?
I'm sorry, I, my ears clogged.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, why are you stepping forward?
I've lived in this town all my life and I love this town. I think you can go a lot of places and you won't find a place better than this. It's just something I can give back to my town. I look to bring professionalism to it and move forward and leave the place, a better place for my kids. Serve it.
Sure, sure. Thank you.
I recently got a job with the DPW. I help out at the mail.
Nice.
You know, a lot of people complain, but they don't step forward to do any. I mowed the grass over there, you know, at the post office the other day. It was like that. I care about my community.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. LaRochelle?
Could that be a potential conflict if he's working for the town?
Mr. Saltzbeck.
So, there are provisions in place and that's an excellent question. It's just a matter of paperwork and a disclosure.
I'm mulling this over, only because there's always some kind of controversy when there is a conflict.
I would have to step aside.
And you would recuse?
If it had something to do with Board of Health or...
Some kind of town property or Board of Health or anything like that.
I understand that.
Okay. Has that disclosure been filed or filled out yet or pending tonight?
No, not yet. It's a special employee designation, but we'll go through the process on our end.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anything further? If there are none, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move to appoint Glenn LaRochelle to the Conservation Commission with the term expiration of June 30th, 2023.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded to approve the appointment. Further discussion? Seen and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, permit license applications. We have a couple before us this evening and these are always good to see. Entertainment permit request for August 27th, 2022 at the Snowbound Club. For the Snowbound Goes Country Band Concert. Is Dean here? Good evening. Now, is this an event that you've had before?
Excuse me?
Is this an event that you've done before or is this something new?
It is something that we've done before. This might be our fourth or fifth year of having country concerts. We've done different concerts in the past, but kind of heading towards the country venues. It's a little bit opened more of a diversified crowd and older crowd, so we like the country music more as we get older.
Yes, I'm with you there. The application looks to be in order. There were no issues from department heads. The fee has been paid. Questions or comments from the board? And this would be for August 27th from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM on the stage there. If there are no questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move to approve the entertainment permit for the Snowbound Club Inc. at 130 Bowlinville Road for Saturday, August 27th, 2022 to host an outdoor country band concert at the club from 1:00 PM to 7:00 PM as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded to approve the request. Any further discussion? Seen and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair will vote aye. There's one. But then we also have a request from the Snowbound Club. This would be an entertainment permit for September 10th, 2022 for a Snowbound Brew Fest. Beer and wine tasting and a musical performer. Again, I see no concerns from department heads. Fee has been paid. Questions, comments from the board?
Could you just explain what a brew fest is?
It's like a beer tasting. It's a short sample. People can come in, they pay a fee and they can go around. We bring different companies in like microbrews and wineries and they set up their own little booth. And people can go around and taste all these different beers.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And is the alcohol covered under their current alcohol license? Because there's no special one-day permit here for the license or anything.
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, so the current license covers all of the alcohol handling and such.
Yeah, they have an outdoor permit now that they're permanently permitted outdoors to serve alcohol.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Yeah, if I can get this out. Just so you're aware that the Bullspit application coming up next, they're both, they're also having an event on the 10th.
Oh, are they?
So, there'll be two of you if that's approved, just so you know.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
But there are two separate times, are they not? One's earlier in the day and one's later in the day.
Well, theirs is quite a bit, you know, from, what, 1:00 to 7:00? Yours is 1:00 to 7:00?
2:00 to 7:00 for the Snowbound.
2:00 to 7:00.
People can go back and forth and enjoy both sides of town. Just don't drink between.
Start with us and then go.
There'll be a price war.
So, September 10th is a Saturday? Okay. I've got to get my calendar. Okay. Anything further from the board?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move to approve the entertainment permit for the Snowbound Club Inc. 130 Bowlinville Road for Saturday, September 10th, 2022 to host an outdoor brew fest at the club from 2:00 PM to 7:00 PM as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you. Motion made and seconded to approve the application. Any discussion? Seen and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. As pointed out by Mr. Ward, our next one is a request for permit from Bullspit Brewery. Good evening.
Good evening.
For the record, state your name.
Jim Hunt, Bullspit Brewing Company.
Thank you. So, what are you looking to do here?
So, last year, as you may remember, we did a series of one-day events right off of Central Street. Our little pop-up brew yard, very successful. And we wanted to return this year and set up the same thing. That piece of property we used last year was unavailable. So, we thought we would try to utilize some of our land down on Summer Drive.
Thank you. I know that, Mrs. Saltzbeck, do you have an update on the concern about whether there's any site contamination?
That's correct. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, the remediation for the soil has not yet kicked off, but we've surveyed everything that's down there. And honestly, I think it's my hope that it'll be pretty close to complete before this event takes place. But with that said, we wanted to talk to the licensed site professional to try to identify what areas, if any, that exist in the exterior that may be problematic in terms of people congregating in that area. So, in a conversation that I had with Joe McGlaughlin at Beta, he provided this chart that gives a breakdown of the different testing areas that they did and where they identified various contaminants. And so, the one area where we had concern was B218, which is the southwestern corner shown here. And conversations that I had with Mr. Hunt this afternoon, we would be blocking off from B214 to B219 and excluding that entire area in that corner. Basically, it was elevated levels of arsenic, which are typical in industrial areas. Usually see the long rail beds and other areas like that. And if it's within the top foot of soil, that's where they consider it to be an issue, usually for like a longer-term habitation. But the core sample they took was five feet deep and so they don't even know with certainty whether or not that area would be in question. So, we're just opting to just have them avoid it altogether just in case.
Yeah, that, so that imaginary line, we will just put the backside of the stage on and then there'll be fencing so no one can even get back there.
Okay.
And it's a temporary stage. We're putting in on a trailer similar to what we did last year, so.
And that was the only spot that they identified as potential?
That was correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, food trucks, music, toilets. There are no issues noted by department heads. Fees have been paid. So, this would be Fridays, Saturdays, and Sundays in September and October. And what hours were you planning, Jim?
So, I believe it's Friday's operating hours would start at 3:00 in the afternoon and go till 9:00.
Yeah.
And Saturday would be noon to 9:00 and I believe we put Sunday noon to 7:00.
Okay. Justin, would you go back to the site plan that she just showed everything was going? Because I was thinking about, last summer, there was some noise concerns by some of the neighbors. Were I just looking at the music is going this way?
It's broadcasting away from the neighborhood. Yep.
Okay. People across the pond will get a nice, enjoy it.
Yeah, I think that maybe that one house on Spring Place might hear some of it, but it's mostly projecting up towards the bike path. And it'll get mostly soaked in by that building and then the Good Speed Building. It's got a lot of surface to travel through.
Questions, comments from the board?
I'm just glad you're doing it again. I think it brought so much to the town. It'll be a little different because it's not right next to the restaurants and stuff, but I think it'll still be a great thing for everybody.
Yeah, the plan is to obviously utilize the restaurants downtown again. We had a great relationship with them last year. We did table numbers so people could call and say, "I'm at table 10 up in the bull yard." And the restaurants would bring the food right to the table, just like a home delivery. So, it was great. So, we'll be back out knocking on the restaurant stores. I do have a spot that says food truck and that's if we decide to bring one in on a Saturday or a Sunday. And we're just going to pull from the list that was here for the food truck fest because the Board of Health knows those trucks and they should be able to get certified easily and quickly. But it won't be an every weekend thing. We're going to, we really want to utilize downtown businesses again for that.
And I know there are a couple of food trucks that are set up down by the bike path. Would be a good, good check also with them. Anything further from the board? So, we're looking for the permit and then also the beer and wine permits approval this evening. And if there are no further questions or comments, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I move to approve the entertainment permit and 27 special one-day malt and wine licenses for Jim Hunt for the 2022 pop-up bull yard to be located at 4 Summer Drive as long as the site is safe for human habitation and as presented this evening.
Second.
Thank you. Made and seconded to approve. Anything further? Seen and hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Best of luck.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Next, we have a Class 3 license renewal. We had approved in December a change of business structure. And there was a question about fencing requirements that the planning board has looked into and have agreed that the fence wasn't necessary because nothing is visible from the road. There was a request to remove, is Mr. Field here first of all? I'm sorry. Good evening. How are you?
Hi.
Okay, so the fence is no longer an issue regarding the cars and putting items up for sale. Have you been, have you removed those items?
Yes.
Okay. And you have a letter from the planning board outlining their approval regarding the fence and also the removal of those vehicles. Questions, comments from the board? Seen and hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
There is no motion needed.
No motion.
Oh, I beg your pardon. You're absolutely correct. All right, so this is just confirming what we did in December. Okay, all right. Well, thank you very much.
All set.
All set.
Thank you.
Boards and Commissions Committee Department Updates. Considering the events of the last few weeks, we have IT Director Don O'Neill here this evening. Hi, Don. So, what's up?
It's been quite a couple of weeks, quite a couple of 10 days actually, but we are in good shape. So, I've said this throughout my career, it's only a matter of time before they hit you with these ransomware attacks. It's just part of the business. So, you gotta always be prepared and be as prepared as possible. And key thing is backups. And fortunately, we had a good set of backups. So, although it took some time to download them, we had all the data. So, that's in my mind, the key of all of this is we didn't lose any data. So, as much as I've been running around with a head, like my chicken with a head cut off, it's just, I'm happy that I can get everybody all their stuff back and get everybody back to work as quickly as possible. So, at this time, we're about 98% there. All your mailboxes, if you look at your iPads tonight, you'll see all your mail back. So, that is all.
Including the back emails?
Yep, yep. That's all there. I've gotten everybody in Town Hall done just about. With a few exceptions, there's some really large mailboxes out there I gotta kind of do separately. But overall, in good shape and just plugging away at, you know, all the little, checking off the one-offs. You know, people are, "I didn't get this" or "I need this reinstalled." So, it's just, you know, doing all that and keeping everybody working at the same time. In light of what happened, it's always a learning experience. So, we always look back and see what can we do better or what can I do better? And so, since this happened, we have instituted a really strict password policy. I was a little lackadaisical before, just kind of, you know, we're a little bumpkin town who's going to hit us, but, you know, it happens. And especially these ransomware guys, they love government and they love police stations. It's just weird. It's what they go for. But, so I've instituted a 14-character password policy now. And because it's 14 characters, I'm not going to enforce having to change them as often. We can probably just do it once a year now because once they're 14 characters, just them being able to figure that out becomes very, very difficult. In fact, we ran them through. There's a website. You can put your password in and it tells you exactly how long certain types of hackers take, which is kind of neat, you know, some of them, you know, it's 29 seconds. Then if you change it and add a few numbers or a symbol, it becomes like 2 trillion years. So, that's where we're going. Just, you know, getting everything back up the way it was. In light of everything, there are a few things, well, kind of good that it happened because I got rid of an old server. The email server was on my list to replace anyways. So, now we have a brand spanking new email server with, you know, up-to-date software and of course, up-to-date antivirus. The antivirus we did switch to is called CrowdStrike. They're one of the leading people in, you know, antivirus and ransomware attacks. I did kind of laugh at that. It was like for years I had Symantec and other ones and I switched to CrowdStrike back in April and here we are.
A foresight on your part.
Yeah, exactly. But they are a really good company and, you know, it is kind of funny when we're going over, we're analyzing, you know, what exactly happened and what executables, you know, it was Russia, by the way, that hacked us, so going against the best. So, when they looked at it, they're, you know, CrowdStrike itself said, you know, unknown. It did not know those executables. So, we were kind of learning for them to add to their database. So, lucky me. So, they've added that. So, that particular executable that they use to crack our passwords and get into our server was now into their database. So, it won't happen to anybody else, which is a good thing. I do think having CrowdStrike on all the desktops and the remediation, when we knew this was happening, having everybody shut everything off immediately, saved all the desktops. So, you know, because as much as I try to tell people, "Save your stuff on the network," everybody keeps it on the desktops. So, all their data, we were able to scrub off and we just, we did reformat every machine just in case because you never know. So, all the machines in here have been, you know, refreshed with Windows. And then we're able to put the user's data that was on their machines on the network. So, there is a copy there being backed up. But most people just bring it back down and use it locally, which I don't have really a problem with as long as I have a copy that's backed up for somebody. Because I really hate, you know, the panic look on people's faces when you're, all your documents are gone. So, I think the worst thing that happened out of all this is my own personal Dropbox they wiped out and I couldn't get it all back because I had that connected to my PC and they got into that and, yeah, wiped out. But I didn't get everything back, but I got my pictures, but stuff for like the historical society is gone. So, it is what it is. But again, more of a learning experience. But all in all, we dodged a big bullet by having to spend a ton of money. We had servers available, you know, thank you COVID and ARPA and just being able to have things available on hand to kind of put into place. So, you know, we were able to get things up and running pretty quickly. In fact, we had the accountant up and running the next day, which was pretty good. So, that's about it in a nutshell. I don't know if you have any other questions, but.
Well, you know, you talk about the fact that we had a spare server on site.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have, so we've got this one in place now. Do we still have any spares?
Yes, one.
We do have one more spare. Okay.
Exactly. I try to keep, you know, that's sort of been my standard, just, you know, in case one just dies, you know? It's quickly, you know, easy to get one back up and running. So, for a couple of future things, the backup software we use now called StorageCraft. I implemented that practically when I started here. And although it's awesome, it is dog slow. And it took me five days to download my backup that I had up in the cloud to get it back down here. So, I'm looking at a couple of other solutions that are more local, that are bulletproof, that a hacker could not get into, but still backs up locally here and you can kind of restore on the fly, which you can do with StorageCraft with somebody, you know, on a day-to-day thing. I deleted my Word document and I usually have it back up like every two hours. I can go back a couple hours and grab it. But when you're doing a whole server restore, it really didn't, I wasn't happy. It was a lot of hours here just kind of staring at a line. Just hoping it going up.
Praying that it's still moving.
Exactly, so.
Okay.
So, I'm looking at that. It's called a Datto drive. And, you know, probably be a good couple of thousand dollars to invest, but it's well worth it. So, you know, but we're in good shape.
Okay, thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Just thank you. Don't envy you at all.
Yeah, it was fun.
That's why you like doing what you do.
That's why you're IT.
That's why, exactly. It is kind of funny. It is my job. It is stressful when you have everybody coming at you. That's what I do.
I need to come by some time and have you do my phone also.
Your iPad's gone, but your phone needs to be, I can take it now.
You look like you're pondering something.
I'm always pondering something, but I'm never sure what to ask, except I think, how did we know that we were hacked? What should we be looking for?
Oh, well, that's a good question and you really kind of don't unless you see some really weird stuff happening with your PC. iPad's not as much. It's mostly PCs and Android phones and things like that that they really go for. But you'll find if it becomes all of a sudden dog slow, you'll, or you see some, or if it's ransomware, then you're going to see some files get encrypted pretty quickly. You're not going to be able to open up anything. You know, it happens relatively fast once they get in. They can do your whole network within a day. But I'd say basically, you know, things you look at, have good up-to-date virus software and that'll tell you right off the bat. You know, there are very few things that it can't pick up.
Is that that daily spam email that we get?
That's, well, that's one factor that we have in place. We use a company called EdgeWave that filters out 99% of the bad stuff. And when you get that daily digest, that stuff where it's like, "Oh, we don't think it's that bad." Do you recognize these senders? And that's where you have the opportunity to release it. But if it's something that you just don't know, you know, just either leave it in there and it'll go away or you can delete it right from that daily digest.
Is there any training for town employees on how to avoid things and look over? I know the school did one.
Yeah, there are. And there's actually, we, you know, I know Bob in Gardner does, he actually does, maybe once every three or four months, he does a phishing email test with people and just kind of sends out a phishing email to see who clicks the executable. And I think that might be even a good start just to kind of do that, to kind of gauge what people do and to see how much we, I need to go back and retrain people.
Right, okay.
Because they're, you know, they're really good. There's emails where, you know, they send, you know, your invoice is attached. And being in government, we're always dealing with invoices and whatnot, you know? So, it's very easy to say, "Oh, okay," and click on that and it's just some crazy thing, so.
Yeah, it's like how they can now randomly call you from a local phone number.
Oh, exactly. It's a phone number, sure. Yep. He always gives you just one step ahead and it's a game.
Yes. Anything else from the board? Anything else from the board? Well, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, so next we have a proclamation. Chief?
Madam Chair, just briefly, I just wanted to give a couple of my observations of Clyde over the years. I've been chief nearly all of Clyde's seven-year career, and what I was amazed with was how well the town had received and supported him. I attribute that to obviously Officer Wiernen, but also to Clyde himself. They as a team exemplify what K-9 program should be. And as Officer Wiernen has often said, some dogs may excel at one aspect of the K-9 program, perhaps drug searches or tracking, or they may interact well with the public during demonstrations, but Clyde was an exception, he excelled at all aspects of the K-9 program. I think he truly accomplished one of the benefits that was presented to myself and Chief Livingston when it was proposed to us to do this, as far as establishing a K-9 program. And what that was is that he would strengthen the relationships we have, not only with the other departments, but also with the community. And that is clearly what's happened with him. In my opinion, he's established a standard by which Winchton and Canines will be measured. And at this point, he is well-deserving of relaxing retirement with his family.
Well, I have a proclamation. So proclamation, whereas K-9 Clyde has dutifully served the Winchton Police Department for nearly seven years, and whereas K-9 Clyde served proudly as the first K-9 officer in the Winchton Police Department since 2015, and whereas K-9 Clyde was a fixture at town events, including the annual summer solstice and fall festivals with frequent visits to Winchton Public Schools, demonstrating his skills with his handler, Officer James Wernen. And whereas K-9 Clyde was embraced by the residents of Winchton who loved and supported him, and whereas K-9 Clyde was named after our beloved Toy Town horse and has now grown to become our much-loved first Toy Town K-9. Now therefore, the Winchton Board of Selectmen do hereby proclaim Wednesday, August 31st, 2022, as K-9 Clyde Day in the town of Winchton, Massachusetts, in gratitude for his forty-nine dog years of service to the Winchton Police Department and our wishes for a happy retirement with his handler, Officer James Wernen. And witness whereof, we have set our hand and caused the seal of the town of Winchton to be affixed on this fifteenth day of August, 2022 A.D. Audie Labrie, Rick Ward, Barbara Anderson, Amy Salter, and Danielle LaPointe, Winchton Board of Selectmen.
Yay Clyde! We should've each had a bone for poor Clyde.
Oh, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to move the proclamation to make August 15th, 2022, K-9 Clyde Day.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, and agree with the discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Yes.
Officer Wiernen, are you gonna take a few weeks or months off to just play with Clyde?
Oh, he's gonna be very... He sees me every day, every morning, so he'll know it's a little different when he doesn't come with me, but he's spoiled that moment anyways.
Yeah.
And on behalf of the town, we would like to present Clyde. Please, you're not bad.
Thank you.
Jim, just hang on one minute, I'm gonna do the commendations for you guys.
Okay. Thank you very much, moving on, we have combination of police officers, Chief Walsh.
Madam Chair, as you're all aware, I'm recognizing and asking that all of you recognize a number of officers and two dispatches for their outstanding response to a report of an armed individual. This individual at the onset was intent upon either harming himself or the responding officers. Under the leadership and direction initially of K-9 handler Jim Wiernen and then ultimately Lieutenant Waltski, the incident was resolved without any injuries. The coordination of the responding police agencies and the professionalism of the communication between the officers and the two dispatches was remarkable, as was the ability of the officers and the dispatchers to remain calm and controlled under very stressful circumstances. Each of the commendations note that the officers and dispatches are an asset to the Winchton Police Department, that cannot be overstated, and in my opinion, should be expanded upon. All of these individuals are not only an asset to the department, but an asset to the town and the community as a whole. So if you are okay with it, I'm just gonna be calling up individually each of the officers and dispatchers. Officer James Wiernen and K-9 Clyde. Dispatcher Dylan Walsh. Dispatcher Dylan May. And Reserve Officer Daniel Caputi.
I would ju, gentlemen, you have my... Thank you, Chief. Next on the agenda, we have an update on temporary traffic patterns, School Street, and then Blair Square.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Saltzback.
If it's not too much trouble, could we take eight point one and then seven point four, and then go back to the normal schedule?
So moved.
Check it. Um, favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So we are taking eight point one out of order. Mrs. Saltzback?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as discussed at your last meeting, the opioid settlement funds will be rolling through to Winchton, and as part of that conversation, we had discussed potential regionalized efforts. And in response to that, the board had a few questions, and Representative Zlatnik is here with us this evening to talk a little bit about what they're working on down in Gardner and provide an opportunity for the board to kind of feel out what that may look like.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you for taking me out of turn. I thought it would be helpful if I gave you all sort of a little bit of background on what we've been talking about and where this came from, to kinda get everyone on the same page. So this spring, the massive opioid settlement was announced, and I saw the number and was initially very excited. And, but when you factor in that it's being spread across many different states and then many different towns and cities in those states, and spread over the next few decades, the annual number that any of us will be receiving isn't too great. So a couple of weeks later, the Attorney General's office published a chart of what towns were estimated to be receiving, not just this year, but over the coming years. And I looked at my district and saw that we really weren't receiving what I thought was enough to really do anything about the problem. You know, for example, there's some towns out this way that are receiving, you know, less than ten thousand dollars a year. So I looked at what we might be able to do in terms of pooling some of that money, especially with Gardner's really receiving the lion's share for the region, being the biggest of the municipalities, and seeing what we could do, again, if we pooled those resources, worked with some of the people already doing work in substance abuse and addiction and the recovery space, to see how we could spread that a little bit further and perhaps make a deeper impact than each town with their sort of limited funds coming from the settlement, trying to do that on their own. So we've been sort of in the process of going through this with the towns in this area, myself and some of my legislative colleagues, working to coordinate that. I was supposed to be joined tonight by Sean Hayden, who's the Vice President of Gamma Inc., which I'm sure you know, it's based in Gardner, but they have several facilities located throughout the region, and they do a wide range of both addiction services but mental health services generally. Unfortunately, he called me this morning and told me that he tested positive for COVID, so I'm sure he'd much rather be here with us, but he could not join me tonight. We were, we were sort of expecting to get into more of the depth and answer questions, but I'm still happy to answer what questions you might have, that I might be able to field, that he did provide me some notes to go off of, and then we'll go from there. I assume that we'll work with him to answer any questions, and we can get into that as we go.
Thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward.
Okay, I went through and read all the documents that were sent, and could you tell us, I don't know if you know this, but tell us a little bit about Pathway House and Alyssa's Place, because those seem totally focused on the opium crisis.
Yes, so I can tell you probably the most about Alyssa's Place, I'm more familiar with that. Alyssa's Place is named after a girl I went to high school with who died some years ago of an overdose. Alyssa's Place is located in downtown Gardner, and also they coordinate a lot of recovery services out of that location, and they do group sessions, things like that. Also, I'll say just sort of recovery socializing, if you're into CrossFit, they do a really rigorous CrossFit session at one of the gyms in Gardner every week. So that's Alyssa's Place. I'm less familiar with the specifics of Pathway House, but there's, as I was saying, there's a number of both inpatient and outpatient work that Gamma provides and services that they provide, and sort of the range of addiction services.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
This is the point.
I do have to apologize, I just picked up my packet today with that hack, we didn't have electronic access, so I haven't had all the time. So when we enter into this agreement, which sounds to me to be a great idea, because you can't do much but ten thousand dollars, does that give Gardner or a specific entity kind of the final say, or, you know, the gavel to decide what is done, or what kind of input do we have?
So this is what we're kind of laying out, is that, and I'll say there's a few variables in here, and I'll lay those out in a second. But so the way it would work is that each town, or sorry, so the way that we're proposing that it work, is that each town would contract independently with Gamma, but obviously with the understanding that, you know, whatever towns end up opting into this would all do so under the same terms. And the draft agreement that was provided to you was made by the City of Gardner's Legal Department for this purpose. Once that's, once that sort of initial agreement is done, it would be between the town and Gamma to work out those details, but it would be Gamma running the day-to-day of that program. What we have proposed initially is, and this is one of the variables, but three to five years of an initial agreement, I think that's just to give sort of enough time to figure out if this is worth pursuing, so we have some data to point to and some evidence to point to the impact that it is or isn't having. But then after that, it would be renewed. I think, I think the actual settlement is, I think it's twenty or thirty years that the money will be paid out. The second piece to that is that depending on how many towns end up opting in from the group that we think would be, would be good for that, that number does fluctuate a little bit. And the actual amount that every town receives does fluctuate a little bit year to year. And I don't know why this was done this way, but this was how the settlement was laid out, that in year one, every town receives more than they would every other year, then it drops down, then it goes back up. So there is a little bit, even once it, even once it sort of settles out, there will be, I anticipate, a remainder every year. That number, I'm not sure of at the moment, because we don't know which and how many of the towns are opting in. But there's been a few things that we've talked about on what to use with that remainder, either the towns, you know, can just keep it, or we can find other things that, you know, could be pooled regional for services, whether that's, you know, bulk purchases of materials, or, you know, like bulk buys for Narcan or something like that, something that each town would, you know, would see some benefit of still doing the pool. Or there's other things that we could talk about with that, with that sort of remainder money that would go beyond what it would cost to run the program that we're proposing.
Thank you. Would there be any time involved on the town side to track anything, report anything, or would it all be done at Gamma?
I imagine that there's probably at some point gonna need to be some reporting back to the Attorney General on how the money's being spent, and that would be done by each municipality, but day-to-day, it would be, I think, Gamma tracking the data that would come in and out of the program.
Okay, and you said that if, or any town that does get into the agreement, the individual town would then have discussions with Gamma as to how that money would be used, or is it once, you know, Gamma has the pot, then Gamma makes all the decisions about the distribution of services or whatever?
Well, that's all laid out in the agreement and how that money would be, you know, how the money would be spent would be agreed to before the agreement took place. As far as, you know, where funds would go, I would say that the service would be available to the participating communities. There'll be a little bit of ebb and flow as the need, you know, ebbs and flows over time.
Any other questions or comments, Mrs. Anderson?
I do. I have, I think the bigger problem that I have with it is it looks like we are relinquishing control to Gardner and to Gamma, and where they might maintain the bulk of the benefit. And without consulting with our stakeholders here in town, like the police chief and the fire chief, I'm not sure that that would be the best for Winchton. Does that make sense? that make sense?
Yes. And I mean, I would certainly recommend that you consult with the police department and fire department. They'll be the ones who are interacting with this program as we go forward. They already do on other programs interact with Gamma, so they should have some kind of relationship and understanding for how that goes. I would say that the, to the first part of your question about sort of, you know, who's going to be getting the benefit, I would say it would depend on where those, you know, where those needs are, right? So, you know, Winchandon gets anywhere from 20 to 50 of these calls in a given year. So ideally, the way this is laid out, every single one of those calls, there would be an attempted referral, right? If there are more calls, there'd be more referrals, less calls, less referrals. So it all depends. It's not, because I do understand the concern about whenever you're talking about regionalization, that where that, you know, where that's going to, where that's going to go. I think the sort of uniqueness about the way that this program is laid out is that it's not to, you know, fund a specific location or fund a specific center. It's funding the specific service of when there is, you know, when there is an overdose or when there is a concern for an addiction-related issue, whether that be with alcohol or some narcotic, that police and fire departments in the participating towns can have access to this resource to, not just to make those referrals, but also refer them to the service that's being offered. Not just saying, here, call this number, but actually someone you can call and actually put, you know, one with the other to try and, you know, help the person who needs that help.
So yeah, I could see that there'd be, need to be some discussion about, like you said, talk with the chiefs. I personally don't know how much, how many, how much of the Gamma services that townspeople use or need. That would be an interesting thing to see, you know, where we are at this point. With the Community Action Center, maybe there's a way to tap into their resources as well to make sure that, is this, I understand it's an opioid settlement. Can it be used for proactive? You know, not just reactive, someone has an overdose and you call in a counselor or the family. Could it be used for being proactive about the issue and, I don't know, education or whatever?
So I would say, my understanding is that the Attorney General's Office has recently or will be soon putting out guidelines and regulations around sort of what are applicable uses of those funds. But I think the general guidance that I've been given is, you know, whether it's on the service side of addiction or on preventative measures, that seems to all be acceptable.
Okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Sulzback.
In the packet from the last meeting, I actually didn't include from the Attorney General's Office their recommendations for the use of funds, and that is an allowable expense.
Questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Yeah, when you look at the Massachusetts abatement terms and the page four of this handout, we got municipal use of abatement funds and how the funds can be used. You must have opioid use disorder treatment, support people in treatment and recovery programs, connections to care. And there's about four pages in here. These are massive programs. And I went to check on the CAC in town as possibly a place. We don't have any of those programs or capabilities to meet those requirements. Now, maybe we can purchase some Narcan for the police, but as far as programs to the detail that they're requiring in here, Winchandon just doesn't have. And that's why I asked about those places in Gardner, because when you check those out, they have the complete programs to help folks. And Winchandon folks will be referred to those Gardner locations because there's few other places they're going to go.
To Rick's point, quite frankly, being able to provide Narcan is like putting a Band-Aid on a gaping heart wound, right? So it's not going to serve us very much to just be able to yearly buy some supplies of reviving medication.
Yeah. And one of those, as Rick was just referencing, so one of them, number seven on page seven, prevent misuse of opioids and implement preventive, prevention education. That could be something that we could take advantage of, as I said, being that proactive prevention edge of it. Is there a time, time limit that they're asking the towns to?
No, we're hoping, I'll say we're hoping to, whenever I'm working with these things, I'll say these goalposts always move. But right now, we're hoping to get, I'll say, as close to a firm idea of which towns will be participating by the end of September.
Okay.
Just so that we can, it'll take a few months, I think, to get sort of the backend set up. So just to, you know, to get this in line kind of as soon as possible, you know, by that point. But again, I've been doing this long enough to know that those deadlines that I've written in pencil for a reason.
Sure.
I think, certainly my objective is to make sure that the towns that I think would be a good fit to participate in this feel comfortable and have all their questions answered, whether that's at the end of September or October or the end of the year, you know, whatever is certainly fine with me.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. LaPointe.
In this chart, chart of, I don't know, 75-ish municipalities, that's not everybody we would be sharing with, correct?
Oh, no, no.
No, that's just the first page.
Yes. So that was just a section because just about, not every city in town is receiving funds from this, but the majority of them are. And so the towns that we have had at least initial contacts with and who have voiced some level of interest are Winchandon, Templeton, Ashburnham, Westminster, and Gardner. And I would say Gardner's, you know, more or less committed at this point. And the other towns are in some stage of discussions.
Thank you. Anything further for Representative Zlatnik? Or questions in general about the program? Well, thank you so much for your time, John.
You're very welcome. And again, I think Sean is certainly more capable of answering specifics about how the program would work. So if there are questions of that nature, just get them to me and we'll figure out a way to get you some answers. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Or maybe at a next meeting or a next meeting after, when we don't have a very full agenda, we can request that they come back, whether he could be able to be here and give us a point of view from his perspective.
Perfect.
Thank you. And was there another one that you wish to take out of order, Justin?
Yes, please. Item 7.4.
Okay, 7.4, which is the review of the Ashburnham-Winchandon Joint Water Authority proposal. So we had gone out to bid. And Mrs. Sulzback, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as referenced in a recent meeting, we did release an RFP for water services. Those are obviously, are obviously shared with the community of Ashburnham. So this evening, we have a couple of different people with us. Obviously, our DPW Director, Brian Croto, if you'd like to come up, Brian, but also George Cornwall from the Ashburnham Water Sewer Commission, who represents on the other side of the table when we have the Joint Water Authority meetings. And George, I just want to thank you for sitting through the past hour of some of the most riveting local government. I'm sure you've watched. But I think there's value in having Mr. Cornwall at the table just to speak, you know, on behalf of Ashburnham and kind of give that perspective as well. So what I had touched upon in the last meeting was that when this report went out, which you all, or the RFP, rather, which you all have a copy of the response, there were about four parties that were interested and came by and toured the plant. Ultimately, we only received one proposal from Violia, the current operation manager down there. And the feedback that we had received, in so many words, from the other three was that the plant is being run so efficiently that there's not much value in them even putting out a proposal, that they felt that there weren't, typically what they're looking for is, you know, they'll go in, say, oh, I could do, you know, efficiency X, Y, and Z. I could carve out a pretty solid check for us and it's worth us coming here and setting up. And that just wasn't the case for the other three. So with that said, the proposal was received, the Joint Water Authority did review it, and we had some conversations about it. But before moving forward, obviously, it's to my benefit to come before the board and kind of provide an opportunity to talk about this a little bit and talk about what it may mean and also have an opportunity to maybe receive some insight from a perspective of mine or Mr. Croto's. So with that said, Madam Chair, I'll open up the floor to all of you. And any questions you may have, we'll be happy to answer them between the three of us.
Thank you. And I will open up to the board. Questions, comments?
I will try to wait until others go.
So how long has Violia run the Ash West?
Well, originally, it was U.S. Filter. And the U.S. Filter was bought out by Violia or absorbed by Violia. And now I think there's another change going on. I've been involved with the, I'm a lifelong resident of Ashburnham. I've been involved with the Joint Water Authority since its inception. And in fact, I was on the committees that helped design the building through the engineering firms and things. And so Violia's been involved in it from, basically from the beginning. And they've done a very good job. A good friend of mine recently passed away, Leo Colette, was a longstanding engineer with Pittsburgh Paper, also James River, and then Moncho from Canada. And he was pretty much the lead engineer down there. And Leo felt strongly that Violia was a top-notch company. There's been no on-time accidents from the beginning, health-wise. There's been, anytime we've ever had a complaint from a customer, they've answered that complaint right away. We've received several proclamations from the state on the job that they're doing, the fact that they're hitting their numbers every month. And reporting is good. And initially, when the last contract or maybe the, we've had several extensions. So the last time, we had two people who applied for the position. One of them was United Water in Gardner, excuse me. And United Water had taken over the Gardner Water Sewer and Departments. And we went in to inspect the water filtration plant to try to assess, you know, who we wanted to bring on as, or if we wanted to continue with Violia. And the condition of the plant was poor. There were bags of supplies open on the floor. You go down in the basement of the plant, there was rust, there was water dripping from some of the valves. And you walk into our plant and the thing is immaculate. There's no, none of that going on from U.S. Filter or Violia. So we, Leo was a strong supporter of their running of the building. And so I'm basically here for, to give you some history and background of what went on there. And I can tell you, I'm no match for Officer Clyde.
I don't think anybody is.
No, no. So when does their contract expire?
Contract is currently up. We're under a COVID provision right now. I believe the language stated in the RFP that it would go live by November 1st or thereabouts.
So in a recent meeting, we had just done that short extension. They'd requested six months. And I was in favor of doing three.
Questions, comments?
Madam Chair.
Mrs. LaPointe.
I'd like to think that I can listen to input and be reasonable, but with the history of Violia, with seeing how many court cases there are, not just against Violia, but how litigious Violia is against other municipalities and against other businesses, I just can't in good faith say, yes, let's go ahead with them. I don't really see the downside in saying, okay, if our plant is run so efficiently, let's say thank you and capitalize perhaps on what they've done logistically, but let another company come back in and see if they can keep up with it, perhaps cheaper, perhaps for the same price. Maybe let's pursue more bringing it in-house. I just can't, I can't in good faith say, yep, let's let these people keep coming in here and doing this. I think we're paying far too much. When you look at their financials, our taxpayers can give our money to other people who would benefit much more greatly, I think, than a corporation like this. I just can't.
Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Sulzback.
Thank you. If I could just touch on a couple of those, I do think they're valid points. And one of the largest criticisms I do frequently hear is, well, look at, you know, the court cases that Violia is tangled in right now. And there are quite a few and it's a pretty easy Google search away. But I would also offer, look at any other water operator, and they're caught in the same cases. It's sad, but it's kind of an industry standard. And I don't really think that there's going to be anybody out there that you're going to find that really has a squeaky-clean record. I see it in the city in which I reside. They get hit with violations all the time. I think a lot of it is due to aging infrastructure across the board in all municipalities, combined with the double hit of stricter regulation. So you're looking at plants that are 20, 30 years old that are failing, combined with, you know, pretty much doctrine coming down from Mast D E P and the EPA, that is far more strict, trying to use equipment that is deficient. And that runs into violation. So when there's a large storm water event, you'll see illegal dumping. Where I live in the Merrimack River, several times a year, that's a violation. And then they end up in the courts, usually trying to fight that. So it can be a little deceiving at times. And then in terms of the in-house piece, I don't know if Mr. Cornwall would like to speak to that, because I know that's kind of a theme that I think historically has been seen in the Joint Water Authority, that type of discussion.
What would you like to know? I'm sorry, I didn't.
Sure. I tend to talk a lot. And the component in terms of bringing, the prospect of bringing things in-house?
And that was brought up, it has been brought up in the past and discussed at length. And the DPW Director in Ashburnham, who has since retired, was dead set against it. He felt that we were not qualified to run the plant properly and that it would be a mistake of epic proportions if we tried to run the thing ourselves.
Part of what you were saying, which I understand and I hear, but also reminded me of my other point that I forgot to bring up, that I can't get over the fact that prior to this year, there was no capital plan. You talked about infrastructure. A company like that, there's no capital planning in place to make sure that we can keep our infrastructure up. I just, I don't know. I have a hard time getting over what I perceive as a big failure.
Sure. And I would say no capital plan may be an exaggeration, but there was a capital plan that maybe wasn't as good as it could have been. But in addition, there's two pieces to that. So one is building a good capital plan, which we had them putting up to date one out over the past year. But the other piece is the community's responsibility to fund that capital plan. And even when there was a capital plan in place that wasn't necessarily the best, but it was the best we had, unfortunately, between the two communities, there's been a marked history of failing to adequately fund that capital plan, which has led to a lot of the issues that we're seeing today.
I'm not trying to give you a hard time.
And I'm not either.
It's something I'm, I'm.
They did present us a cap. They did present us a capital plan, and it was a, a list of the items that they felt would be, would needing replacement in a certain amount of time, and, you know, it was a considerable amount of money. Neither Water Department or Water Sewer Commission felt that we could fund that properly, so it's kind of, it's there on the table, but it has not been, had not been funded, because it's astronomical. It's more, much more than, especially Ashburnham can afford to pay for. So it's going to be a, an issue in the future, but at this point, we're not able to fully fund it.
And our own, our own wastewater treatment plant is in the same situation. An earlier report on the condition of the plant outlined multiple pages of components. I can picture the document, you know, this piece of equipment was installed in, you know, 1990, lifespan is 10, 15 years, we're already past that. And again, you know, we do have a capital plan in town for, for other things, but we simply don't have any capital plan, even, maybe even an outline for our own wastewater treatment plant, not to mention our portion of the, of the Ash West, Ash West, Ash, Ash Winch plant.
So it's estimated, this could be mistaken, that Michael Burke, the Vice President of Operations, maybe it's a different Michael Burke, has an estimated net worth of $45 million. I would rather throw our money elsewhere of someone who can do a similar job.
I understand your point. Where do we find?
Back to one of the other three companies, who said, yeah, I can't do better, but maybe they can do the same.
So it wasn't, it wasn't even a matter of doing better, it was a matter of they, they felt if they came here, they wouldn't be able to turn a profit. So they, they had no interest in coming, and I think, it, you know, in so many words, I don't really like the big guy either, and I like to shop smallest frequently as I can, but when it comes to economies of scale in this line of work, and the, the discounts that, just in, in the form of purchasing power alone, that the big guy can get in this scenario, the savings that they can realize, other companies just can't compete. And, you know, that's difficult, I mean, I, I just don't, you know, it's, it's hard, I get what you're saying, but we went through the process, and no one, no one else was interested, even if we wanted them to be, which is a tough bargaining position to be in.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If I might, I have, my problem with Veolia is they are the largest in the world, the largest in North America, and by doing so, they bought out the previous company from Ashburnham. My understanding is now they've bought out Gardner, and they have no competition. My problem is, that is not capitalism. Without competition, then they can raise their rates however high they want, and we are hostage to them, and that really fundamentally eats at me. I can't have it, and I can't allow the people of Winchenden to be in that position.
Okay, thank you.
So the second largest company under Veolia came out and looked at, and looked at it, and they, and I talked, I forget what, who Mark worked for, and they, they came out and they looked at it, and he said, there's zero profit here. He goes, it would cost me money to, for us to set foot here, and he goes, we just can't do it. We come out to keep Veolia and the people of that size honest. That's why he came out to the tour.
Well, let me ask you this, because if, if we assign this contract, they are in fact increasing rates, or they're increasing their, their cost to the towns immediately, correct?
It's as of October 1st, I believe.
Now, would, we would in turn have to increase our rates on our water users to support that, no?
It's going to be tight.
And.
I think, I think, I think I can make it work this year, but, yeah, they are increasing the rates. You are 100% correct on that.
And there are, I think.
And that's the problem, and, because then we're stuck, and we're stuck, and we, all we can do is look at, at the townspeople who are already pretty angry, and go, there's nothing we can do. And, and you know what? I just, I fundamentally have a problem with that. There's always something that we can do, there's always choice.
Mr. Solzberg?
Sure, I was just going to follow up on that as well. There are some intangibles that we covered when we were going through the rate increase process, that, you know, I typically don't like to build my policy based on hope, but I'm holding out hope that we'll see some positive indicators, and things will positively impact that rate, so like increased business and increased use of water, for example, things like that, which would hopefully help mitigate that a little bit. But once again, it's speculative, so it, it's kind of dependent on those, those components that we can't definitively say will happen.
So can I pose this to you, because of the drought, and now we're on a water ban?
No, we're back to normal.
Why? We haven't had any rain.
After some serious conversation with Mass DEP, they stated that that was not policy and a suggestion, and we need to follow our permit, and our permit doesn't have any stricter things, other than Monday through Friday, nine to five, no watering, and, and every other day. It, I spent days on the phone.
So meaning we're allowed to use the water, but it's to our detriment now? Is that?
Yeah, they said it's up to this board right here, to, if they want to go stricter than our permit policy.
I see.
That's as of last Thursday afternoon, that, that came about. It took me, Mr. Ward, what, about a week to get an answer? That's how long it took him to call back, because I think they put it through their processes. The DPW Director in Ashburnham called on Friday and got the same answer I got on Thursday.
What does Ashburnham's stand on this contract?
Well, that's new information for me, but right now, we're under what we call a severe water.
Try a little closer to the mic.
Oh, I'm sorry, right now, we're under what we call a severe water drought, which is no watering, no outdoor watering at all, and have been for a month, three weeks or a month. The reservoir is low, but not critically low, and there, so there is some leeway there. It's interesting that the state has not necessarily changed their tune, but that they've reordered their priorities, because always in the past, they have put restrictions on us right early, first right off in the spring, for a water ban, or, you know, odd-even days, right in the spring, when the reservoir is full, overtopping the dam and everything else, and they start right, right away with that, so that's interesting that you've got.
That, that restriction in the spring is permit-based.
Yep.
So there's no, right, so that's, there's no changing that, but there's no stricter restrictions in the permit other than that. So DEP won't give you a clear definitive answer, they'll give you a suggestion, but they won't put it in writing saying you have to do this, if that makes sense. They, they basically don't want to take responsibility, because when we got the email, we, we put out the message saying DEP said, well, some homeowner has called DEP, and DEP called us and said, hey, what are you guys doing? We said, we're following the email that you said, that we're in drought. They said, oh, we're only suggesting that, it's not set in stone, so.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Solzberg?
Could I just, just to take a clarification, was your question to Mr. Cornwall about what Ashburnham's thoughts were towards Veolia being the only respondent?
Yes, actually, my question was.
Oh, okay.
As far as Veolia and the Joint Water Authority, how is, what does Ashburnham, what's their stand on this?
Well, with Leo's passing, we're one member down, so, and we have an opening for the third member, so right now, it's me. And we feel that with the, Veolia's past performance, that, and they're the only applicant, and also the fact that none of the rest of the large companies wanted to bid on it, that we should go ahead with Veolia.
Okay, thank you. What happens if one town approves and one doesn't?
I suppose it would be a tie vote, so we would have to go, ooh, dramatic. We would have to re-release an RFP, we would have to extend the contract, but the downside of re-releasing an RFP is, we're probably, you're rolling the dice, you're probably going to get the same respondent, but now that one respondent knows that they're the only respondent definitively, and they can change their price, and usually it goes northward.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
First, to deal with this water ban. If in fact, we're reading that as odd-even day, we need to post that on the town website under the news section, because we're still saying it's a ban, and the public needs to know which way we're going, one way or the other.
I have to get somebody to change the website for me.
Yeah, that website needs to be changed tomorrow.
And we are the water commissioners, we're the ones who are.
You are 100% the water commissioners.
And we're the ones that are supposed to be announcing that, and I have that issue going, you can't do it without our knowledge.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Continuing on to, about Veolia, I'm also looking at what's best for the town, and Veolia's been doing this for 21 years for this town, and there's been no problems in 21 years. We've had, in my memory, we've had two DPW Directors and two town managers that have recommended, advised us to go with Veolia, because they're a good company and they're doing a good job. Granted, they're a big, global company, but that doesn't make it bad for Winchenden. We've got to go who can do the job. There is no way that we are going to find the expertise locally, or in the immediate vicinity, to even come in and try to do this on our own. We have their expertise, we get the expertise from Lemonster, because those folks are available, and that's the longest-running contract with Veolia in the state, Lemonster, and they've been happy all that time. I don't believe we can afford to get the level and years of expertise, and we really have to, we have nobody else wanting to do this. But Veolia has received numerous awards from the state for the quality of the service that they've done. I mean, I've got several clippings from newspapers. So they're doing a good job in this state, they're doing a good job for Winchenden. Why would we dump them just because they're global, and they've got some legal problems in other sections of the country? I just don't understand it. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Thank you, Mrs. Anderson. Could I just clarify, Veolia hasn't had the contract with, with us for 21 years, correct?
Yes, they have.
With, for the Ash West.
Well.
Winch.
Winch, sorry.
Veolia.
Yes and, ye, yes and no, because Veolia bought out the first company.
But that means Veolia didn't have the contract for 21 years, because somebody else had it first, but then they bought that company out, correct? Let me just be clear.
Yeah, correct. I don't know.
Because I believe it was in 2015 that Veolia bought them out. Am I right?
I couldn't put a year on it, I'm sorry, I.
Around that area?
Yeah, I think it's, it may have been, may have been earlier than that, but.
I believe that was when we became aware of it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mrs. LaPointe.
Not to beat a dead horse and not to be narrow-visioned, but just one final point. This was a conference call that Veolia had with stakeholders about 20, 22 results, about earnings. Two sentences I would like to read. First of all, our first-half results are very strong and enable us to fully confirm our 20, 2022 guidance of an organic growth of something between 4% and 6% and the current net income of 1.1 billion euros, billion with a B. We are perfectly in line with our annual trajectory. Second sentence. Sorry, I lost it. Talking about just quarter one, revenue grew by 46% to 20.2 billion euros for the half year, and that's talking about their, their recent absorption of another company, Suez. So we're talking gobs and gobs of billions of dollars. We mean nothing to them. They're just going to keep raising our rates, and our people can't afford it. That's all.
I, I agree with what Justin said about, you know, supporting locals, supporting small. I'm not a big fan of monopolies, except the game. You know, I remember back in the, whenever it was, 60s, 70s, when they broke up AT&amp;T and Bell and, and all that, to avoid that kind of thing, and here we are 30 years later, and it's all, they've all come together again. I understand your point about profits, you know, they actually, they are a for-profit company. Just as an example, I have something here dated July 29th, 2022, oil company profits. Exxon reported income of 17.9 billion for the three months through June, more than three times what it earned in the same quarter a year ago, and that's just one company, so.
It's disgusting.
It is very disgusting, regardless of what you do.
I say it's high time that, instead of being the status quo, okay, whatever you say, we figure out a way to do something about it and not play the game, whether that be that we have to do it ourselves, we figure out how to do it ourselves. I've been told before that our staff is perfectly capable of doing the work that Veolia is doing, so I, I don't know, I'm not mad at you, I just think it's time we say, forget this. All done, time to think about our people and what's going to benefit us. That's all, done, I'll shut up now.
Anything further from the board?
Can I just clarify that this represents just the water portion? We also have a separate contract with them for sewer, and, and they're not at all connected together, so we're not doing anything with that right now, with the sewer portion.
Correct.
Okay.
That's a good point, thank you.
The sewer is going out to bid. Now that we got, now that we got our email back, I can write the RFP.
Yeah, right.
But this is not connected.
And we don't get any type of special deal with sewer, because we have them for water, it's completely separate.
So not definitively, but it would be advantageous to a company if they were already handling water operations, it would make it more appealing for wastewater operations.
Okay, thank you.
Good clarification, thank you, yeah, we're discussing strictly the Ashburnham-Winchenden Joint Water Authorities.
Exactly, it's both towns decide.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be back here in a few months talking about our own, the wastewater treatment plant.
I'm glad you asked that, thank you.
Yeah. Anything further? Questions, comments? If there are none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
I move the board authorize the town manager to award the operations and maintenance of the Ashburnham and Winchenden Joint Water Authority Water Filtration Plant to Veolia.
Seconded.
Thank you, made a seconded. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Other posts say no?
No.
No.
Chair will vote aye. Brian, when do you anticipate, if you're just getting that, really just sending out the RFP, when do you think we might get things back and be having this discussion again?
I'm open to have the RFP out this week, then I'm going to give, I'm going to put it on the street for a month.
Okay.
And we'll be back to the board with a recommendation, or what we get for findings, so within about a month, a month and a half, we'll be back, depending on how it falls.
Into September, early October, okay. Considering that it's a very different scope of work, it's not a joint whatever, any sense if we may have more success as far as people submitting actual quotes for the water treatment plan, or is that just kind of crystal ball-ish?
It's hard to say.
Yeah, okay. I would hope that we have some options.
Competition is always good.
It is very good. In the interim, again, you know, we, we've talked about in. In the interim, again, you know, we've talked about in-house. For myself anyway, I think it would be helpful if you could look at it as an in-house process. What would be involved, how many people it would take, the costs that might be involved as far as salary or coverage or whatever. So that way, when we do get those quotes back, we can look at bringing it in-house and we'll have a comparison.
So that is full disclosure, a little more in-depth than I think we could really do in-house. So, and I guess there's a couple components to that. So when we did the salary study, that was a component, we asked them to take a look at that. And the gentleman, whose name escapes me, did mention that in so many words he didn't see or his team didn't identify a benefit in doing that.
You recall?
And if anything, it opened us up to liabilities in staffing. And that if, you know, our, say our operator quits or leaves or passes away or something, then we're scrambling to find coverage. And the benefit of being within the umbrella of a larger organization, Veolia or otherwise, is that they can rotate people in and out. And that's something we would never be able to replicate in-house. The other component is the buying power that I referenced earlier. We would never be able to compete on that scale either. So I don't wanna, you know, cut it off at the legs, but if we were to have something meaningful to compare, we would probably have to pay somebody a fee to really drill down into that, more so than what we could realistically do.
Okay, and I know, I do recall that report and the gentleman was here, made the presentation. Looking ahead, when you do come back to the board with this, if you could include that part of his presentation, that would be helpful.
Certainly, and I mean, we may even be able to reach out to him and ask if maybe he could specify and expand on that a little bit at little or no cost, just to kind of break down what factors realistically may get cost prohibitive, but just to have something.
To give you an example, the chief operator just left. And the closest operator that Veolia brought in to meet the permit needs was out of Chick Bay. Because nobody in this area wants to do it. So they brought, they brought in an operator. If we had, if that was me and I had to bring in somebody to fill that spot and it was an engineering firm, we'd pay $175 an hour for 40 hours a week because that's what they're mandated to work. So in this case, by them having the contract, we weren't held liable for anything.
All right. Well, if that's a discussion we can look forward to in a few months. Thank you very much for your time. All right, we are back to 7.3. Update on temporary traffic pattern on School Street and Blair Square. Mr. Salsback, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this will be a quick run-through, but in conversations that I had had with Select Woman Anderson a couple weeks ago about some of the feedback she was receiving from some of her neighbors about the orange barrels we've been dutifully covering the town in over the past year and a half or so.
Massachusetts flowers, yeah.
Yeah. We wanted to make sure that there was something that kind of showed we had a plan here and what we're intending to do. So I wanted to give the board an opportunity to provide some feedback or any members of the public, should anybody watch this, they can reach out to the office. But here's what our intent is, more or less. So the two areas in question are Blair Square and more recently, there was the closure on Front Street up by Clyde the Horse. So to start Blair Square, and this is just a mock-up and not exactly what it will look like, but we're planning on permanently keying off that area. We did receive a $5,000 placemaking grant from the Northeast Association of Realtors that would help stretch our dollars a little further. But pretty much extending out, adding a little green space, maybe adding a tree and a bench and terminating the sidewalk in some way at the end there, just to formalize it a little bit. It's a little bit of a catch-22, we don't wanna do too, too much because of the broader Blair Square redevelopment we're looking to do, you know, at some point in the next two or three years. So we don't wanna dump a ton of money in there just to rip it all out again. But just something.
Oh, so that's just the corner by the church?
Yes, correct, yep.
So Justin, you're talking about the crosswalk being terminated there. So where would people cross from one side to the other? Do they have to go up?
So, so I actually changed, I actually changed that, that's just a rough mock-up.
Okay.
The sidewalk, if you zoom out a little bit. The sidewalk would go further in and it would cross on, if you see the driveway for Melissia Mortgage in the middle, right there?
Yep.
It would cross on the other side. So the crosswalk would be more straight and less, and less parallel. But that's subject to change later on down the road, wants to redesign a Blair Square as well. But I figure, figured the shorter the crosswalk, the better because you're already taking your life in your hands when you're crossing there.
Yeah, really. Could we put, like we did on the crosswalk's corner to the school, you know, the hit a button flashing yellow or something?
Yeah, those are $1,500 apiece, they're not much money, and I think they're worth their weight in gold. We put them on the bike path on Glen Allen and it makes a big difference.
Okay.
So that, and we're planning on doing that before this winter, I think, if the schedule allows, and depending on what the pricing comes back at, is that accurate?
Yeah, I gotta create that bid as well.
Can we stay on one, one at a time, so I can just beat you up over and while?
Please do.
Okay, thank you. Having had complaints about this particular one, and I really wasn't that concerned at the time because it kinda made sense to me, but looking at what you're doing and knowing that, make it go bigger again, just a little bit. One time, I was coming home down by that lower entrance, by the other part, you know, when you leave to get your coffee and whatnot.
Yeah.
And I was coming up, there was a big truck, again, these are always big trucks, but obviously he had made a mistake and he was trying to get out, he was coming the wrong way down that one way. And he had to make a very sharp right-hand turn to get back onto 12. And so therefore, both sides of the traffic had to completely come to a stop. It was very, very dangerous, and I thought, ooh, this really isn't good. Maybe we didn't think it through. Because sometimes mistakes happen and people end up on the wrong way. And I'm just looking at it thinking, it just looks dangerous to me.
So we could, if I'm understanding correctly, you're saying somebody was coming out here?
Yeah, they were coming out, big truck.
So...
Trying to make that hard right, and it was very, very difficult.
So we can soften that corner and even make it something that's mountable, potentially, so that if somebody had to make a wide, for whatever reason, they're going in or, I mean, part of me also says, just learn to go the right way down the road.
Right, yeah. But the other part is, they use GPS, and none of this is on their GPS. They end up on the wrong way on a road and they don't know how to get off, trying to get off. And what you mean, it's a problem.
They physically drove past two signs that said, do not enter. And if this is passed, it's gonna be do not enter in the road that they physically can see. So the police department's been writing tickets because people are stubborn in their, in their ways and they don't wanna abide by it. And fortunately, Chief Walsh's guys are taking care of business.
I do have to admit, it was probably a good three, four, five months ago, but we had an, oh shit moment.
Right, I've done it.
And I think once it's better marked...
Truck driver, I wanna say it was a whoopsie moment. Not, not a, I didn't see it, there's a lot to look at if you're driving a big truck on that road and you probably didn't see it, yeah.
And I do think once it's better marked and there's something more formal there, that'll help too, because after a while, a big pile of orange barrels, you just kinda get blind to it. Half of our town is orange barrels right now.
Well, it's confusing too. It's horrible looking, horrible.
We'll keep that in mind.
Yeah. But the other part, and I haven't even been down there quite frankly, to see how he got on that road, I don't know how, I don't know where he came from, I don't. Because I was obviously at the tail end of the whoopsie. But what do we, what do we have to stop people from going out the indoor?
We don't really, right? Because we're still trying to let people come in for the church.
The other way, is that accurate?
Yeah, I mean, what are we doing?
The amount of accidents since this have really been none. They've been mostly on rear-end collisions on Central Street and nothing really in the intersection now. So what we want it to happen is happening. It is safer, there wasn't many crashes there before, but still, it's taking out, we met with the state probably two weeks ago, and the state liked the initiative that we took in this respect as a start towards improving that intersection. I forget that they, what they said about that, that whole intersection being one of the worst in the state with the crash data. So, you know, the town is trying to take a proactive stance towards it.
It was actually their first recommendation is that we close that and make it a one-way. And this was a meeting maybe two or three weeks ago, and we told them, we actually already did, we temporarily closed it. So, but we'll, we'll keep it in mind and make sure we mark it and make it so that if somebody, for whatever reason, is in a large truck going the wrong way, that they'll be able to...
Well, anybody, anywhere, you know, we don't want them doing it.
Absolutely, yes, so we'll have to...
We have to make it hard for them to get onto that road.
Well, we also...
Flashing do not enter sign or something.
So if you zoom out a little bit, in, in, in front of the church, where the crosswalk is, we're gonna put a couple handicap spots, so we're gonna box out, we're gonna box out that section because right now, they're doing diagonal parking. So we're gonna box it out with the curbing. So they physically have to drive through the curbing to get up to the upper part. So it would force them to have to turn around in the church's parking lot. The church committed to doing some plantings and some different stuff and a bench, we're just gonna put in, put in the hardscape so that it can be parallel parking. The pastor stopped in my office and said they absolutely love it because they can fit more cars than they could before.
Well, that, and then, let me bring up, that's the other thing that somebody brought up to me, is they're very irritated that the church seems to be getting free parking.
I saw on our favorite local conspiracy theory page that the reason that the town was doing that was to give the church more parking, which was not the case. And it's Mastot recommended, there's been several studies about it. If a church or a business or anyone else really happens to get more parking from something, it also creates a safer area for pedestrians and vehicular traffic, then that's just a bonus, but it's...
They were parking there anyway.
Right.
I also feel that it's safer for the dance studio. The people are able to park there rather than them parking in our parking lot and the kids are crossing the street.
They double park on Central, come on.
What, what's that?
That is really hard. When dance is in session, it's a hard road.
This parking lot out here is full when they, when they're going.
So if there are any other questions or comments about that one? So School Square being up here, but more realistically, the closure being down at Front Street on this end. We've had a series of crashes there in the past year, but also historically, and it's kind of a similar situation, there's just way too much going on and too many people coming out of different spots. So what we're looking to do is do some mild improvements to School Square, but close off Front Street permanently. This isn't exactly what it will look like, but just to give you a visual, so that people will no longer be coming out here and competing and trying to look right as people are going down Tanuary Hill, but traffic would still be able to pull in and through. So if you're looking to go out that way, you would have to go down the newly improved School Square and then take a right. And that would take away one more piece. But in part of the conversations that Select Woman Anderson and I had had, and where she lives very close to there, there are people who are just blindly following their GPS currently and still trying to go out that way, so...
No, they're not.
Oh, they've stopped?
They realize, they're coming to the end of School Square on Front Street where you got the god-awful orange and the do not enter, and it looks horrible, and they realize they can't enter, and now they're backing out onto 12. And that's a problem.
Backing up toward the bank parking lot again?
Like big trucks, see where it says School Square? 18-wheelers are now backing up onto Route 12 to get out of that mess. Because their GPS told them they could swing it around if they took the wrong, wrong turn, and they can't, and then so they back up. And that's a problem. Because there's nowhere else for them to go.
This one, I'm not as confident we'd be able to hammer out before the winter, but it's still a possibility. But I think the same thing, just better, more and better signage. And I also, I think just the visual indication, once it's physically closed off and it's not just barrels, but it's like a grass lawn...
Yeah, it does look pretty good now.
It should trigger something in their heads to not go that way.
Can I, can I also ask? I mean, isn't there a procedure to doing roads, changing the layout of roads? Or can you just do it? Like it was all of a sudden, there it is, the road's changed. And I had no idea, when I got phone calls, I went, I don't know. And they go, it's right outside, go look. And I went, oh, son of a gun. And without knowing, without following a procedure, it seems very odd that all of a sudden, people are used to doing something and then know you can't.
So, I mean, there are at times temporary closures if we're doing utility work or other things that pops up from time to time. But I guess the point of the statement being that every once in a while, you're driving around and something changes. So people need to kind of keep their head on a swivel. I think for this one, whereas a town road, we can kind of, we being, you know, this board and the staff and town departments can redesign or change town roads as we see fit. As far as I've seen, there isn't a formal process, but trying to bring these, especially these two where they're so high-profile before the board, not necessarily a public hearing, but providing an opportunity for the public to kind of voice their opinion on if they were really against it. Mr. Lucier, do you have a concern about either of these?
God has, God has a policy, they put it in the paper, they have people show up and give all their views before they just arbitrarily go do something like that.
Sure, thank you. So the intent is putting the barrels temporarily to, at minimum, create discussion and have people come out and kind of provide their feedback. But we don't wanna go out and just make these permanent changes without getting that feedback from the community. So we can do better about maybe the order in which we do it.
I think we need to do better about that and checking with those people in that area to see how it affects them in their life. You know, besides being so ugly. And it's, it is kind of confusing because there's a lot of barrels, there's a lot of signs, and you, and there's a lot of roads. So your head is, is really on a swivel, looking around, if you weren't familiar with the area, going, what do I do, what do I do?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I know this is pie in the sky and too easy a solution, so it can't be a possibility, but is there a way for local municipalities to alert, like the DOT or some sort of service that, that roads are changing or closing or now one way for, let's say, three months? Is there a way we can communicate that so systems get updated?
For GPS, in the past, I've reached out directly on behalf, on behalf of municipalities to Google Maps, for example, to have them update something. We do coordinate on that level from time to time. But I'm not sure if there's anything through the state that would do that.
The state doesn't, I shouldn't say care, but it's our jurisdiction to do what we wish with our roads.
Just seems like if there was an avenue to do something like that, if something is gonna be more than, let's say, a week, right? If there was a way to alert somebody, but I have no idea how that works.
I would say no, because the state would have done it for Central Street with the trucks, rather than sticking signs on Glen Allen Street that says no truck access. So I would think that if something was happened, it would have been triggered in that permit for Central Street, and there was, nothing, we deal with that every day right now.
Could that be something that we put, you know, thinking about Barbara saying about trucks, they come down School Square thinking they can do this? No trucks or some sort of signage on Route 12?
Oh.
No through truck access or something, I don't know.
100%, we can put whatever the board wishes, but yeah, we could put no, no truck access on School Square. I'm not quite sure why the trucks would be trying to do a loop there, but anything's possible with them.
The other part, the other part of that is right where you have the green at the end is where the state plow trucks tend to congregate during a snowstorm. I'm not sure...
You mean down here?
What I'm talking about, exactly where the green is. You'll see one truck and then the other truck comes and kind of they meet up and then they go off in a pattern. And, but that right there is where you will see them for a long period of, while they're waiting for the other trucks to catch up to them on their route, is, is what I'm assuming is they're doing. But that is where they, they go and now...
They'll have to find someplace else, maybe.
Well, I don't know. Well, I don't know, I'm not sure, this is the right.
They sit in the parking lot out here too.
Yeah, I've I've seen them kind of.
So depending on how what the weather is, they could sit for three hours or they could sit for eight, there's no rhyme or reason. It's when they're told to go back out.
Down at Wadaville Plaza or something like that, yeah. Um, Justin, if I remember when you and I were talking about this some time, um, you reached out to those families?
So we had spoken to some residents on Front Street, not all of them, um, and received some feedback. But I think before we go through and put something permanent in, it would probably be to our benefit to go through and kind of show them a soft plan to get their feedback if they have any concerns. Um, the ones that we did speak to were kind of happy about it, that it would limit the traffic going up and down there and um kind of limit the constant stream of accidents, but we can even maybe drop a flag.
But the accidents, can I just interrupt? The accidents aren't there, they're at the end of School Street going on to Front. That's where they are.
Well, I'm sure that still impacts them quite a bit because that whole.
The whole area.
Yeah, that the people are trying to go around and stuff like that.
But making that a one-way isn't gonna reduce the mess that is, you know, River Street, Front Street, School Street.
Yeah, but it does reduce traffic trying to come down through that green. So you've got a line coming down 12, you've got three or four trying to inch in or they pull down because they're gonna go right and then they block the s- the line of sight.
It's usually the people, honestly, it's the people coming taking a left off Tanuary Hill.
Yeah.
Going up to 12 where somebody thinks they might have the right-of-way coming out of 12.
Yeah.
That's usually.
So we'll have to look at that whole section more.
It's really not that particular area.
Yeah, um, and speaking for myself, I don't know about the board, I would be fine having a public hearing. In invite invite input um before we make things too permanent.
And I think the other thing that we we've got to think of is is the Rockin Horse. Lot of people like to go see that Rockin Horse and is it still, like, they take pictures on that horse all the time. It's some kind of a, I don't know, tourist attraction, but you know, are they gonna get there and get out?
We close it off, make a little parking lot down there.
It used to have a little parking lot, we got rid of it.
The food ranch?
No, there was a parking lot right in front of Clyde, but we got rid of it years ago, couple of years ago.
Okay.
Not too long ago, actually, and the town took it over and we planted grass.
Yeah, and put the walkway in, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So we we actually had that conversation about closing the entire thing. And I think that if you did some public outreach and that was the determination, that that's the determination. You know, maybe m- m- maybe it is better and people can park down there or or maybe it's better to open it back up. Without putting the barrels out and getting insight from the taxpayers, then we don't, we have no direction to go. And that's all we're looking for is a direction.
Danielle?
Closing, closing what, the triangle, school square and Front Street?
The end of the triangle.
Oh.
So right there, so right now it's, used to be two ways, now it's one way and actually just closing that off, making it dead-end. So it in order to get for if for this house down here to get to their driveway, they would have to go up down school square and then down this little dead-end area.
I think we really need to check with the people that it impacts before we make any decision because yeah, it's it's just wrong.
If it all goes to.
Mm-hmm.
Next meeting.
And and that was part of the intent is we wanted to kind of create the conversation. Um, and sometimes we can post things on social media and on the website until it blew in the face, we don't hear anything. But the second we flip a street to one-way, they all come out of the woodwork, so.
Well, yeah, a lot of people are having a lot of hard time with all the one-ways all of a sudden because this is a small town and they're like, what's up with all the one-ways, I can't even get home anymore. And which is literally what I heard and I go.
Yeah, and then you mix in the detours around Central Street and it's. I was trying to get over to the Ingleside a few months, few weeks for the when Robert's the Broadcaster. And I can't, okay, I can go this, no, I can't, damn it, I gotta go because then I'm coming from up here.
It's very difficult and and yeah, people are very.
But obviously I made it.
Very uncomfortable with change, people don't like change. This is not change, this is one way that and it's difficult.
Been a good opportunity to learn the side streets.
And nobody knows why.
Yeah.
And that they have a problem with.
Score around that detour sign.
Oh, my God, I see so many people on Central Street near CVS, so like, forget that. And then like.
Yeah. All right, shall we move on? All right, seven point five salary study discussion. Mr. Saltback, whenever you're ready.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as I've expressed over the past several months and more recently echoed by our auditor, Tony Roselli, municipalities are finding it increasingly difficult to fill key positions in town hall. And this is due to several reasons, including mass retirements um throughout the public sector, a top labor market on a global scale and limited new blood entering this line of work. Um, so it's created really difficult, bless you, um, conditions for municipalities to hire employees. So in response to this, one of the biggest barriers is offering competitive wages. And I think in some areas we've kind of fallen behind. Um, and I would like to do a salary study to hire a consultant that can go through line by line all town hall positions and kind of measure up where we are in comparison to other communities. Um, this is for a multitude of reasons, among them, if, you know, our current employees, I want to make sure that we're paying them a fair wage. Uh, and I think on the other side of things is we're looking to fill some of these positions. I don't want us to get stuck in a trap where we're continuing to put out roles over and over again and continually increasing the salary on the hope that someone will bite. I want to make sure that we're doing this in a more targeted and calculated and educated way instead of just throwing money at the problem. Um, so most recently, we went through this process in two thousand seventeen. Uh, it's been a little bit of time and then also we've had a global pandemic in between there that's really drastically shifted the landscape that we're looking at in terms of hiring folks. So I have solicited um the assistance of Community Paradigm Associates who did that study the last time around. Um, the benefit of that is that they're familiar with the organization. Uh, but I'm also soliciting from two other firms as well, hoping to get some responses just so that there's a little bit of competition and we'll see what that looks like. But ultimately, I wanted to come before the board, bounce this off of all of you and ask if you felt an appropriate funding source um not to exceed seven thousand dollars would be ARPA funds. Reason being, um, I think part of the issue that we're looking at right now is was COVID pandemic-related in terms of the shortage of available employees. Um, I think at this point, the ARPA funds that we are using don't have to be tied to those standards anymore. We did go through the process of determining um and calculating loss revenue, but I I still think it's important to kind of tie it to that. So if anybody has any input or questions, I would gladly take them at this time.
Thank you, I'll open up to the board.
I'm gonna ask you, can't you Google? Why do we have to pay for it, can't you Google it?
You could, um, and I think in one-off situations you can do that. We've done that for a couple of people sitting in this room.
Yeah.
Um, over the past couple of year or a couple of years. But um, when we're looking at it on a broader scale, it it's easier to do one or two of those. It's pretty time-consuming, but doing thirty of them um takes a lot. And I think the landscape is really shifting a lot right now. And I think where we're at currently, um, as much as I try to do things in-house as frequently as I can, we're stretched pretty thin and on top of that, we're short-staffed. Um, so trying, I think, to do those things at the same time is is not impossible, but it's difficult. And I think you're gonna get a more quality product by hiring a firm that does this um as, you know, one of their main focuses rather than uh us trying to cobble something together in-house.
Madam Chair?
Mrs. Lapointe?
I would adamantly and vehemently request that we actively pursue um some of the other avenues for this opportunity rather than Community Paradigm Associates.
I think it's also, it's um, correct me if I'm wrong, Justin, I mean, a- a- any company, whoever it is who puts together a salary study like this, um, they would also take into account benefits, compensation, um, things specific to the town um and the municipality. So I agree that Google, you could find, you know, what's what's the current salary of a executive director of something. But without knowing the minutia behind the position, how do you know that you're 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 in the ballpark?
That's not what we got last time.
What do you mean?
It didn't compare benefits or anything like that in in our word last one.
Oh, the one in twenty seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We can make sure they include that in the scope, but it it is an important piece. It's, you know, if you have no two communities of the same to start, even if it's the same title, the role could be entirely different from one town to another. But also, you know, benefits, if you have a community like us with a sixty forty split, you could have another town that has a seventy thirty, that's a a pretty significant chunk of change. Um, so we we can look at that as well. And I mean, another component, having a four-day work week, it's four tens, but having a four-day work week, that's that's a component. And so I'd like to have all of those things kind of lined up and compared to see, um, you know, how much that helps. The four-day work week is nice, but also increasingly, I think, more municipalities are starting to swing towards that in an effort to try to be more appealing. Um, and so that only gets us so far, unfortunately, but something we need to look at. And we'll look at other firms, I had a feeling that that was gonna be a thing, so.
A- as as we should, yep.
Didn't take you long to get to know me very well, huh?
I didn't think, I couldn't believe it's been five years since we last did that last study. And and as as you've mentioned, it's it's an entirely different world out there now.
I don't think it is. I think I think these studies, we paper more studies, and what do they do for us? We looked at the last study and where did it get us? Oh, well, we had to change this one and this one's not right and this one, we have to increase that one or or. I I just, I don't have a lot of faith in these studies.
I see the benefit in them, but I also think it's just gonna tell us that the pandemic has changed people's viewpoint very fundamentally and they don't want to work their life away. I think we're gonna see that there has to be some sort of more balance and I don't know how we're gonna provide that, but I think that's what we're gonna see.
Yeah.
And I know, um, one of the things that Mr. Roselli pointed out was shared resources for um employment as well. You know, when you have um communities, small communities, and there's like a specialist, that they could share the resource. That's big now too. So maybe we wanna, you know, I'm sure Bernie could look at something like that and include that as well.
Yeah, I know he mentioned, and to be honest, that gives me the heebie-jeebies to think about sharing a collective treasurer or or some of those positions, but, you know, in today's day and age, you need to look at them.
Yeah, they're.
Look at all the options.
They're professionals.
Yeah, yeah. Any other discussion on this art on this item, motion? Uh, if there are none, I will entertain a motion.
Madam Chair?
Mr. Ward?
I motion to authorize the town manager manager to utilize ARPA funds not to exceed seven thousand to secure the services of an outside firm for the purposes of conducting an up-to-date salary survey for town hall employees.
Seconded.
Uh, can I, up for discussion?
Yes, I was about to do the same, second for discussion. Um, are you okay?
Oh, yeah, sure.
Discussion, um. Finance committee, I'm just thinking about their request to be included on any use of ARPA funds.
Oh, that's a good point.
Mm-hmm.
Please be sure to keep them in this loop.
I'll update them.
Okay, in the event this passes. Um, Mrs. Lapointe, you had something else?
I'm just somewhat, um, uncomfortable isn't the right word because I trust you. But I'm, um, for lack of a better word, off the top of my head, I'm uncomfortable that there is um a contract ready to be signed from Community Paradigm and and not from others and I, you know how I feel. But um, I don't know how I would suggest that the motion be amended, but I I don't think I would want to give the authorization to sign this contract.
Thank you, any further discussion? We the we do have a motion to um move this forward. Um, so you're hearing nothing further, all in favor of the.
Yes, I apologize, I was I was gonna say, I, it's not terribly time-sensitive, um, although I'd like to get going on it, but we can wait until the next meeting. Um, I have solicited from two others at this time. And so I think if we hear back from one or two of them at the next meeting, then great. But if we don't, um, it is kind of a weirdly uh specific and specialized type of work. So it it could be that the two others just aren't interested. Um, well, it's getting late, sorry. Long story short is it could it could wait if it makes you comfortable and I can bring it back before the board and we can review them all.
Okay, what is the pleasure of the board?
I would like that.
I would prefer to wait.
Okay. I'm fine with waiting, till next meeting.
I withdraw my motion.
Is that okay with the?
That's fine.
Okay, okay, thank you. And we'll look forward to this at our next meeting. Thank you very much. All right, town manager and board of selectmen goals and objectives.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, hard copies are just distributed, I apologize. I typically like to get them out in advance, but we didn't have access to the cloud over the weekend and I was brushing it up a little bit on Friday. So what we have here is effectively the fiscal year twenty-two goals. Um, worked up a little bit for fiscal year twenty-three. So there are a couple items I wanted to touch on, um, I'm gonna go through it line by line, but I'll try to be quick. And if you want to stop me at any point, please do.
Can I, can I, just overall, can I say something before you even start? Um, as I was going over, like, my packet, I was looking at them and I'm like, why do our goals not line up with our eval? Like, they should line up. When we go to look at your goals, when we go to judge you on your goals and, you know, on the evaluation.
Oh.
They do not align and they need to.
I tend to agree. I hadn't thought, I hadn't looked at it that way.
I hadn't compared the two.
You think, well, tho- those are the tools that you use as a successor, um, and they don't align and that drives me crazy. Sorry.
Good, good thoughts. Um, so additions or alterations are in blue. Um, and from the top, so the the first goal right off the bat, we did not meet last year. Um, we we fell short. So I still would like to make a push for that. Um, and I think maybe we can try to get more creative in the way we go about dragging people out to town meetings, but I would like to increase participation. Um, creating an interactive database for ongoing projects and grants, we had something in the works, um, and then it didn't quite launch. So I think it is important, though, to get something going on that one and we fell short on that one. Um, and then to round it out for the first three, launching a hybrid virtual meeting platform. Um, we have the Owl, it is not the best technology and I think we can do better there too. Um, so tho- those three were kind of tough ones that I'd like to refocus on this year. Uh, everything following, though, is pretty good. So working on encouraging events down on Central Street and adjacent areas. We have the Fall Fest, obviously, we want to revisit past events such as fireworks. Um, that's something that the whole rec group is working on, was recently advertised on social media in the last month and there was a lot of interest there. And then, um, as always, exploring potential new events. I would also like, uh, for me personally, to host quarterly informal citizen engagement events just to give residents an opportunity to come out and and meet me in a less formal setting. I think sometimes these meetings are a little intimidating. And to maybe just carve out, you know, one hour every three months, have somebody come by and, you know, get some donuts or whatever and residents can come by and just talk to me or complain about a street light that's been out on their street for three years or just little things like that, um, and to maybe just get to know me more as a person and less as a guy, uh, wearing a tie behind a table. So that's something I'd like to implement this year. On the business and economic development side of things, we would like to continue holding ribbon-cutting ceremonies and advertise all new business opening openings. I know there were some pickups there with COVID um shortly thereafter, so I want to double down on those efforts. We do have a vacancy down at that office right now, but we've been trying to work with the redevelopment authority to have them take charge of that process, so we'll be helping and overseeing a comprehensive zoning review of commercial and industrial spaces as well as developing design standards for downtown. Those both go hand in hand. We did start that with the signage bylaw, um, that it made it to the the, you know, ninety-ninth uh percentage point, didn't quite get over the goal line there. So we can, we'll be continuing to review that. Working connecting, um, working to connect commercial property owners with prospective tenants or developers. I did a lot of work over the past year with the IGA trying to fill that space. Um, and I think I would like to turn my sights to. And I think I would like to turn my sights to the RHI building and White's Mill. If I could bag either one of those over the next year, I think I'd be happy. So I'm going to be working hard with their current owners or soon owners to get something going there, at least on the early side of things. And then working with cannabis businesses to navigate the permitting process and encourage timely launch of operations. So when I was developing this list last year, Bud Barns still wasn't open, they are now open. There's another one over by the harbor that we're looking to get open soon. The obvious benefit of that is that revenue starts coming in, so I want to keep on top of that. The Hillview property, which is something we haven't really discussed much as a group, but you're going to start seeing come up more and more in front of Conservation and the Planning Board. Over the past year, I've been working with the Redevelopment Authority for that parcel of land that's owned behind the Mylec Building to try to get something going there. And we're in the process of potentially selling a parcel to a grow facility who would pay to have a whole road put in and subdevelop all the parcels, stub everything out with utilities. So they would build a significant business back there, but also leave two to three completely built-out, ready-to-go parcels for the Redevelopment Authority to market and sell. So we could actually see some actual redevelopment behind that building. It's just kind of been sitting vacant, so we'll be focusing on that. And then, of course, as always, supporting and promoting local agriculture, which I think is an important piece of this community's fabric. For town departments, continuing to increase interaction between town and school events, showcasing one department head at every other. I changed that. I think every was just a lot, but we've been doing every other, and it's been a good pace. But there's sometimes we just have so much business that there's just not much time. Increasing department head presence and visibility at town meetings, implementing recommendations from the 2015 DLS Financial Management Review. That was on there last year, we'll continue that, especially with the most recent, yes.
Can I ask why it says 2015 and not 17 or 2022? Why are we sticking with 2015?
I don't know, I mean, that was the most impactful one, that was directly following the whole self-funded insurance issue. And there are still things on there that haven't been addressed in seven years, so...
But there's stuff on almost every one that hasn't been addressed.
It's a fair question. I could, I could look into it. I don't know why I'm stuck on that one, but that one just sticks out in my head.
Well, I feel like we should be putting maybe all of them on, you know, I don't know.
From 2015 to current or to...
Yeah.
Something like that, yeah.
Okay, we can reword that. We can reword it right now. There we go, look at that. And the last one, execute a salary study, which we just discussed in an effort to help us retain and maintain staffing levels. And plan out potential growth for recreation, including the creation of a formal department through appropriate avenues. So we touched on this a little bit, but, you know, whatever our charter and bylaws say, making sure we check all those boxes, go through town meeting. Right now, it's grant-funded, so it's not really a town department, but I'd like to formalize that as we go forward. For boards and committees, continuing to hold quarterly tribe board meetings, exploring the Community Preservation Act, so that exploratory committee's been doing an excellent job. And I would like to establish some type of timeline if that committee supports it for a special town meeting vote. If it were to happen, it would be a special, special town meeting to happen between this fall and the annual town meeting, if it were to happen. But they're kind of on the fence a little bit. For master plan implementation, supporting that committee and rolling out their action items. So we just had that joint meeting a couple weeks ago. And then continuing to work with the Charter and Bylaw Review Committee to complete their revisions. That's my understanding, that once they're done, they would like to disband. So we'll see how that goes. For infrastructure, roads, building additional road funding into the operating budget. I flipped a capital budget, and the reason being is we have some cannabis revenue coming down the road. We recommend against using those funds to fund the operating budget, but one-off expenses, it's a perfectly acceptable use. So realistically, if we could build something into our capital plan, we did it last year, some supplemental funding for road paving, but getting in the practice of continually doing that so that we can kind of catch up, instead of just continuously falling behind on the state of our roads in town. Water and sewer, enter a contract for water sewer services, which we're in the process of doing. Analyze the capital needs of our existing systems, which is ongoing. And then I'd really like to double down on our focus of identifying potential revenue sources to fray the costs to ratepayers. We've talked about a couple ideas and kicked them around. I'd like to see maybe some of those come to fruition, so we'll see how that goes. Continuing to work to improve gateways in town, so signage and wayfinding initiatives is undergoing. Beach Street improvements and blight and illegal dumping, which we'll have a follow-up to that at the next selectman meeting. Preserving historic assets, so the Coppola restoration, we're aiming to do this summer and fall before the winter comes. And working to identify some type of external, excuse me, external funding source for Phase One design. So by external, I mean grants or something else other than town coffers, if I can find it. For active projects, the Four Summer Brewery, just continuing to move forward on that. Old Murdoch, completing design for Phase One, putting the project out to bid and beginning Phase One repairs. For the library, completing the design for Phase Two, which is pretty much wrapped up, and putting that out to bid, it's currently out to bid, and completing Phase Two repairs. So we're hoping to be done with that by the end of this fiscal year. For the Winchton Community Park, substantial completion by, I was calling for spring of 2022 a year ago. Now we're saying fall. Realistically, I think we're establishing June 1st of next year for an official opening. That's what we're targeting, it should be done well before then. That's just long enough to give the grass a chance to grow and get established before everybody tramples it. Central Street reconstruction, so Brian and his team have been going out, all out on that. So that'll reach substantial completion before this winter, and then just a couple follow-up items, hopefully, in the spring. Fire station is something that I haven't received a lot of feedback on, admittedly, and maybe not necessarily right now, but something for the board to think about for a future conversation. We had slated at one point to secure funding for this upcoming special town meeting. If that's something that's still on the table, or if the board has any interest in moving that forward, just give it some thought, and we can continue to discuss. Blair Square redesign, so finalizing the temporary traffic foil, like we discussed earlier this evening. Continuing to work to identify potential funding sources and continuing to move the project through the tip process, which is moving along at a good clip right now. For Beach Street, raising Four Seas Garage and stabilizing the site until we have a design and park plans there, and then rehabbing the two-family structure. And the Webster Street parcel, which was just transferred to the Redevelopment Authority at the last annual town meeting. I'd like to try to identify funding, there are some trails and grant programs, different opportunities that could help us clean up that site and extend the rail trail. Might take a few years, but I'd like to at least start the groundwork on that one. So that's everything I have for now. Just to give you an idea of where my focuses are, my team's focuses are for the next year. This is just a draft. I think maybe at the next meeting, we can finalize it. If you want to give it some thought for anything you want to add, change, remove, and just email it to me or the chair, and the chair can pass it on, but something. So any questions for now?
Not that I haven't asked.
No. All right. Thank you for that. Next, we have review of the fall special town meeting schedule. Whenever you're ready, Mr. Saltback.
There's been a few crisp mornings, which means it's special town meeting season. So get ready. So we mapped this one out, and we landed on October 24th, 2022. That would give us the necessary lead time that we would need. The board would need to vote this evening, and I believe it's in your addenda to announce that date and open things up. The warrant itself would close on September 6th at noon. I would review the draft with the selectmen on September 12th. Finance Committee deadline to publish a legal notice of the public hearing would be on September 20th. On September 27th, the selectmen and FinCom would meet jointly to review. I know, we've done this both ways since I've been here. We've done it together, and we've done it separate. I have to say, admittedly, it makes my life way easier when we just knock it out in one night together. And that way, I'm not here two nights in a row repeating myself. But if you'd like to break it up, we can certainly break it up. After the pity party I just threw for myself. So moving on through October 3rd, the Board of Selectmen vote warrant article recommendations. On the 4th, we would send it out to the printer. On the 10th is the deadline to post a special town meeting warrant, and we would mail out the warrant notice to residents. And on the 24th, at 7 o'clock in the gym, we would have the special town meeting. So I will say, at this point, beyond housekeeping things, there isn't anything really crazy on there just yet in terms of the warrant. So I would say at your next meeting, we'd probably have a good first pass at a draft to give you an idea of what we're looking at. But does this schedule work for everybody?
One question, the 10th is Columbus Day, Indigenous People Day, that's a holiday, is it not?
My apologies, it is. We, Mrs. Daigle had reached out to me and pointed that out, and I forgot to update it. So Tuesday, October 11th.
Okay, and that still meets all the time requirements?
Yes.
Okay. Anything, anything from the board at this point?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Ward.
Looking at the September 27th, do we still have a boss meeting on the 26th? Going to the calendar, we do.
Then I would say that you would, but if it would make sense, you could shift it. Or you could have that meeting on Monday, and FinCom can join you on a Monday, if they're agreeable to it.
Yeah, the only thing I'm concerned about, doing all this together. We meet at 6 o'clock. Now, if we're not going to have a meeting on Monday, we can't be adding stuff to get done in one hour, because that public hearing starts at 7 o'clock.
You could go later.
Nobody wants to.
But do you want to come two nights in a row?
No, I'd rather, I'd rather, well, I'd rather get it on Monday night, if we're going to meet that night anyway. So are we not meeting, or are we meeting on September 26th?
It is a regular scheduled meeting evening.
Yes.
So the two things on the schedule at the moment, selectman review and vote to finalize warrant, and then town manager presents warrant to Finance Committee. You're saying do them both on Monday?
No, I'm saying...
I'm sorry.
The selectman review and vote can be on Monday, September 26th, at our meeting.
So are you asking...
Our vote is only to finalize the warrant, not to finalize the individual...
Right, we just finalize, it won't take long.
No, it takes five minutes.
Yeah.
So in other words, we could do, we could do that line, that item on Monday as part of our regular meeting.
If we want to have a regular meeting, yes. And then just let Tuesday be the public hearing.
Except that is...
Yeah, I like that.
Is the draft being presented on September 12th likely going to be different than whatever would be available on the 27th? We get presented...
Reviews the draft warrant.
On 12th. So is it going to be significantly different on the 27th?
No, because it's closed. The warrant will be closed by the 12th.
Oh, that's true.
So you can't change it.
Never mind.
I'm with you, Mr. Ward. I think we should do that. I don't want to come here two nights in a row, I don't, sorry for you.
By the sounds of, I think I'll be here two nights in a row either way. So that's fine. I'm paid to be here, so you're kind of like, I'll suck it up.
Yeah, the 26th is, would be our regular meeting.
Okay, so...
But...
Yeah?
Mr. Ward, I hear what you were saying, but we should probably wait to hear the input from public hearing before we vote to finalize the warrant, no?
Well, we have to finalize the warrant.
We're not voting on the articles.
And then in October is when we make our recommendations.
Which is after we hear FinCom, which is the way I like it.
That's true, okay.
Right. All we're saying is that's it, this is the final warrant.
Yeah, this is what's on it.
Okay.
So I shifted this one from a Tuesday to a Monday. The selectman to review and vote to finalize the warrant. And then the hearing with FinCom will be Tuesday at 7:00.
7 o'clock on this, or whatever the public hearing date time is.
Yeah, right, okay.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Lapointe.
Would the actual special town meeting be in the auditorium, not the gymnasium? Or we're looking at the gymnasium?
Oh, that was probably a COVID carryover.
Yeah.
We don't like the gymnasium, the acoustics.
No, why not?
It's wrong.
Did you say wrong? I don't think that answered my question.
The acoustics are not the best, I mean, they're great if you're playing basketball, but...
You can't see, the visuals are bad.
Okay.
Just wrong.
Okay.
Anything further on this, on the schedule? If there's nothing, I'll entertain a motion.
I don't even know where we're at.
7.7.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I moved the board's schedule to fall special town meeting for Monday, October 24th, 2022, at 7:00 p.m., to be held at Murdoch Middle High School, and to open the special town meeting warrant on Tuesday, August 30th, 2022, at 8:00 a.m., and close the special town meeting warrant on Tuesday, September 6th, 2022, at noon.
Seconded.
Madam, seconded, any discussion?
I do.
Yes, Mrs. Anderson.
This needs to be publicized, like, when we open it, put it out there. When we're going to close it, put it out there the day before. That's it. Make sure people know. Plaster it everywhere.
Mm-hmm, there you go.
That's my thesis.
Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Thank you for that. I understand from my sources that without the computer, this was like, you had a paper calendar, almost?
Oh, it was horrible. Yeah, it was like I was working in 1990. So for the manager's report, so typically, I pull from the calendar what I did for the past two weeks, because I couldn't remember on my own otherwise, which is pathetic. So it's sparser than typical, but for financial updates, year-end reporting is nearing completion with a few minor transfers to go before the Finance Committee. There was a small accounting error in the additional transfer that we did for the treasurer. So we just need to go back and fix that. On the personnel side of things, I am closing the search for the treasurer-collector. We had a really good conversation with Zoe Dupont, who's our assistant town treasurer-collector. We are going to be promoting her to acting town treasurer-collector. So as part of that process, she's going to come in a little lower on the scale. We're going to keep Donna Spellman on in a more reduced capacity, but she's going to help provide oversight, she carries both certifications. So she's going to stay on through that process, help train up Zoe. And we officially sent Zoe to collector school at UMass Amherst last week. So she started that process to work on her certification. So as always, we're happy to promote from within, and I think Zoe will really rise to the occasion, so, good to see. And we're happy to have Tiffany Newton on board as the part-time rec coordinator. So as you know, she has extensive knowledge of the town, the rec commission, and she came highly recommended by the Winchton Community Park Committee. So we're lucky to have her. For project updates, I joined the Conservation Commission last Thursday evening to discuss the Bullspit project at Four Summer Drive, and they will be moving that forward. So we're happy to see that. And the locks have officially been changed at Four Seas Garage on Beach Street. Power was cut today. Thank you to Brian for coordinating that effort. And we'll be establishing a timeline for the demolition of the structure. So we're moving forward on that. And miscellaneous updates, the Comcast negotiations are nearing completion with a final draft to go before the Communications Committee sometime this week. I don't know if it was officially scheduled or not, was it? No?
Madam Chair. No, no, it hasn't been scheduled yet. I'm waiting for the changes back from Comcast before I reach out to the committee to schedule it. They'll be hearing from me soon.
So they will be meeting soon anyway, to review that. And once they've reviewed it and provided any input, we'll bring it before the Board of Selectmen for final approval. And the Capital Planning Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, August 17th, at 5:00 p.m. And the Capital Planning Committee will be meeting on Wednesday, August seventeenth, at five P.M. to review the progress of recent capital projects, and that's pretty much kicking off, uh, the upcoming budget cycle, so.
Alright, I was not aware of that meeting.
My apologies. The Capital Planning Committee's going to be meeting this Wednesday. Um, I think, I think it officially got posted today, um, and Chairman Barbaro knew, and I thought he notified all of you, but I will be making phone calls on the way home, apparently.
I thought, can I just ask, I thought I saw that there was a, um, the citizen position was available on the town website.
It was advertised, um, that's the moderator's appointment, so we advertised it, we only received one response, um, and it was Mike Barbaro, so he was reappointed. Thank you. And that is everything I have.
And just one thing on the Comcast negotiations, you know, I talked about getting closed captioned in for our meetings, is that part of?
Indirectly, it is, so there's, um, a percentage that they give us contractually every year that we can invest in our various equipment that we need. So I, I would place that underneath that category. So in years past, when it was negotiated, it came in at a really low percentage, it was one percent, which is really not very typical. Um, and I think our broadcasting equipment that we currently have is kind of reflective of that, that it, we have a lot of, um, breakages and kind of deficiencies in our equipment, so as part of the negotiation, we did get them to go up to three percent, and we're still pushing for a little bit more. That's gonna give us a little bit extra wiggle room to pay for things like closed captioning and updating some of our equipment that really needs to be updated. So, yes, is the true answer.
Good, thank you. Anything else for the Town Manager on his report? Alright, we have, um, two sets of minutes. The first is Monday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, at our regular meeting. This was, uh, included the joint meeting with the Audit Committee, Finance Committee, and the School Committee.
Madam Chair.
Mrs. Anderson.
I vote, I'd like to make motion to approve the minutes for Monday, July eleventh, twenty twenty-two, as presented.
I'll second it. Thank you. You were absent at this meeting.
Yeah, so I think I can second, I just have to abstain from the vote.
Yeah. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstain?
Abstain.
It's passed four oh one, and then we have the minutes from our executive session of July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two. Men's chair. Meant to be approved only, yes, Mrs. Anderson.
I'd like to make a motion to approve only and not release the executive session minutes from Monday, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-two.
Second. Thank you. All in favor say, oh, executive session has to be a roll call vote?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Uh, Mrs. Salter.
Aye.
Mr. Ward.
Aye.
Mrs. Anderson.
Aye.
Mrs. LaPointe.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, approve only. Our next meeting is the twenty-ninth. Anything else before we adjourn? August. Isn't it?
I thought this was the only one.
Okay.
Unless we need us.
September is the next one.
Alright, so our next one is going to be September twelfth.
And again, just to ask that, when that warrant gets opened, it needs to be posted.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, adjourned at nine oh four.